All right, Madam Clerk, I call this meeting to order. We take the roll call.
Commissioner Dodge?
Here.
Commissioner Lieberman?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here. Let us stand for the Pledge of Legions. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. We don't have a planned presentation, but we would like to take this opportunity to provide a proclamation to one of our outstanding executive leadership team who sadly will be leaving us. And so I would like to read, I won't read it per word for word, but I will hit the highlights of it because our dear Tom Kelly is retiring and going on to another chapter in his life. So here's some remarks. It is with great pleasure that we proudly honor Tom Kelly on the occasion of his retirement from Montgomery County. Since 1992, the Montgomery County Commission believes public service is an especially notable career choice and that working in service to one's fellow citizens is an honorable way of life. And this is certainly one room that wholeheartedly is dedicated to that. Montgomery County has been committed to providing high-quality services that benefit all the residents of the county since its founding in 1803. Mr. Kelly began his career with Montgomery County in 1992 as a financial consultant. Also served as manager of operations, assistant director, and director of FCFC, JFS director, and assistant county administrator. Mr. Kelly received a BSN Accounting and Business Administration from Central State University. He received the Top Ten African American Male Award by Parity Incorporated, participated in Leadership Dayton, was named Man of the Year runner-up by the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society of Dayton Region, named United Way of Greater Dayton's area's Volunteer Fundraiser of the Year, served as Montgomery County UNCF Workplace Giving Campaign Chair, and succeeded in running ten Human Service Levy campaigns. Tom, that is a lot, and I'm sure we could come up with a whole lot of other awards for all the work you've done over the years. Mr. Kelly is a true public servant and an incredibly valuable member of the Montgomery County team and community. Since 1992, serving the citizens of our communities, we want to wish Mr. Kelly continued joy and happiness in preparing for the next exciting phase in his life. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Montgomery County, on this 23rd day of August, do hereby recognize, honor, and congratulate Mr. Kelly for his outstanding service to the citizens of Montgomery County. May he find much joy from the new life and opportunities that retirement will offer. And it was signed by myself and my fellow commissioners, and we mean every word of it. I know we'll have a party later this afternoon as well. But there really aren't enough ways to say thank you for the incredible contributions you've made and the number of lives you have touched is immeasurable. The people you've mentored, the impact you've had. And so we are forever grateful and appreciative of every moment of that. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
So thank you very much. I truly appreciate the proclamation. I appreciate your remarks. To all three of you, as commissioners, Michael as county administrator, everyone present, my colleagues, the staff, my fellow, you know, leaders here in the dais, the podium, whatever. You know, it's an unusual opportunity when you get to spend 30 years in one place. I've truly appreciated being with Montgomery County. I've appreciated serving the commissioners and serving, most importantly, the citizens of Montgomery County. Because that's why we're all here. At the end of the day, if it wasn't about providing service, the work that we do, and doing everything we can to ensure that our community is a better place, there'd be no purpose in being here. I've been very fortunate to have a long career here. I've been very fortunate to have a solid team who truly has done all the work, you know. None of us do the work by ourselves. We put teams around us, we work with our staffs. And I've had the privilege over the last 30 years of having outstanding people that have covered my back, that have done the true work, that have made sure that services are available for citizens throughout our entire community. And I can't begin to thank them for everything they've done. So, you know, over that 30 years, I've served a variety of different commissioners, several different county administrators. And the thing I want everyone who may be listening to this today to understand is we all unite in this work together. It doesn't matter what political party we're affiliated with. All that matters is getting the work done. And there are a lot of examples that can be learned from that lesson. If you unite around getting the work done and knowing at the end of the day who you're serving, what's important, and how to help elevate people and get them the resources they need, you can do a lot of good things. And so again, I know I've thanked you a couple of times. I will thank you a third time. It's been my pleasure to serve for 30 years. And, you know, as you know, and as probably everyone else in the community knows at this point, I'm not retiring to go sit on the porch. I will be leaving to become the CEO and President of United Way of the Greater Dayton Area. And that will give me the opportunity to transition into a position where I can continue to do the work that I've built my career upon. And it will give me the opportunity to continue to partner with Montgomery County and with many others in the community to try to continue what I just talked about. Ensuring that we are helping citizens throughout the community raise and elevate their lives, attain the resources they need, and move forward in trying to be in a better place. And I feel very fortunate that I've been given the opportunity and blessed with the ability at this point in time to do those things. And so thank you all very much.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
You know, you're the embodiment of servant leadership. You really are. And, you know, over the years, whenever we've asked you to look into something, get involved in something, we know that it's going to be handled the best it can be. Your true concern for citizens has always shown through. So we thank you for that, for your empathy and your compassion for people that sometimes, he said something earlier today, and it's so true. On the inside, we know you're smiling. And and, you know, we can't thank you enough. 30 years. I was telling him earlier, I remember the first time I saw him, I started here a year before he did. And I was like, who's that guy? And they're like, oh, he's new to Human Services. Well, who knew then that, you know, you would be somebody that I will, whenever I think of Human Services, I will think of you. And thank you so much. And again, like you said, you're just down the road. And our partnership with United Way, I know is going to be stronger and better for you being there. So thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom. You know, everything they've said, I guess I could probably repeat it for the next half hour. But anyway, do you ever get mad? I've never seen you ever raise your voice or get upset or anything. What do you take every day? You do, you're just so calm to me, you know?
He is calm to me, yeah.
That's great, that's great. We appreciate it.
It's just the way that I get things done, usually.
But I especially want to thank you for the Human Services Levy. Because, you know, since I've been a commissioner, we've been involved in that. And so we've always won, and so we're counting on you again this year, or next year, I guess.
Who weighs that?
Whatever.
Don't rush him, Judy.
Let's not rush, yeah, no pressure. All right. Anyway, thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Tom, on behalf of the administration, you know, I've said it before, it's been a pleasure. We look forward to working with you in this next role. You know, I think it's going to be a great partnership, and we'll continue that work in the next role. So congratulations on your move over there and on your retirement. And it's been a pleasure to work hand in hand. We were peers before this role. And we've worked together in a number of different roles throughout our careers together, so. And then, of course, the bond that I think our families have had with our fathers. I think that's, I think they both look down and say they've achieved the goal. So thank you. God bless you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mark.
One last task. We have to get a picture.
Oh, okay.
Robert, where do you want it?
Up here or down there?
Okay. All right. Now we have the county engineer. Paul Turner.
Good afternoon, commissioners, county administrators, assistant county administrators. Ladies and gentlemen, we have just three resolutions today. They're all dealing with road closings for culvert replacements. The first is Resolution 22-1290 for Union Road between US 35 and Dayton Liberty Road lasting approximately four days. 1291 is for Yankee Street between Provincetown Road and Penbrook Trail lasting approximately two days. And 1292 is Miami Springsboro Pike between Shepherd Road and Medler Road lasting approximately four days.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. County Sheriff.
Thank you, commissioners. Under the County Sheriff, we have Resolution 1293. Submit a grant application to the Ohio Department of Public Safety. Project Safe Neighborhoods in the amount of $125,000. We have Resolution 1294. Approve the Ohio Drug Law Enforcement Fund Equipment Inventory Report per the requirements set forth by the Office of Criminal Justice Services. And we have Resolution 1295. Accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Public Safety. Recovery Ohio Major Drug Interdiction Ohio Organized Crime Investigations Commission in the amount of $106,122.77.
I move for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Juvenile Court.
Good afternoon. Thank you, commissioners. On behalf of Anthony Capizzi, Administrator Judge, we have one resolution for consideration, 22-1296, which is authorizing agreement with South Community Incorporated to provide life program services to youth from Adamas and ODYS, Ohio Department of Youth Services, in an amount not to exceed $1,045,496.52 through June 30th of 2023.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. County Administrator.
Under the County Administrator, under the Clerk's office, we have approved the minutes of the meeting on August 16th, 2022. Resolution 1297. Approval of bills. And Resolution 1298. Approval of trial and expenses. Both of those lists are available in the Clerk's office.
Move for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Administrative Services.
Good afternoon, commissioners. We have eight items for your approval today. Resolution 1299 is approval of personnel actions. The list is available in the Clerk's office. 1300 is authorizes an agreement with Nationwide Power Solutions for Uninterruptible Power Supply, UPS, preventive maintenance for juvenile court in an amount not to exceed $2,013.74. And this is through June 30th of 2023. Resolution 1301 authorizes an intergovernmental agreement with Green County Emergency Management to transfer ownership of equipment purchased with fiscal year 2018 State Homeland Security Program Grant Funds. Resolution 1302 amends the agreement with Black and Beach for consultant services for the Montgomery County Environmental Services Lab by adding $187,026.68 to the original amount for a revised total of $1,245,909.27. Resolution 1303 amends the sublease agreement with Miami Valley Career Technology Center for the subleasing of 138 square feet of office space located at the Business Solutions Center by exercising their first renewal option. And this goes through September 30th of 23. Resolution 1304 authorizes a county auditor to issue a warrant in the amount of $42,000 for the tire buyback event. And Resolution 1305 read advertises for proposals for a hazmat vehicle for the Risk, Safety, and Emergency Management Department. Finally, Resolution 1306 solicits bids for the Wright Flyer Relocation Project at an estimated cost of $308,124.
Commissioners, before you approve, Phil, could you discuss Resolution 1306 on the Wright Flyer? Just give a brief update of the commissioners, what we're doing with this project, please.
Sure. If you're not familiar, this project began really with the Riverside project where the Wright Flyer was located next to the Engineers Building there. And then with the development next door, that had to be relocated. And you all commissioners committed to relocating that to a suitable site. And after some work by various departments within the county, it was located at the, what, the southeast corner of Edwin C. Moses and Third Street. So basically, when you cross the Third Street Bridge and continue a little bit to the west, you'll run right across this nice plaza. We are doing a couple improvements to what was originally at Riverside. We are raising it higher so it can be more visibly seen. We are uplighting it so it will glow at night. And what else? I think...
The bench work, Phil. Some of the bench work.
Oh, yeah, there's going to be seating around the perimeter and a nice landscape plaza so that we can basically, it's another urban park for us to take care of, in essence.
Very nice. Now, when is this going to be?
Well, we are hopeful that we can basically have it in place here before December.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you very much.
We'll see if we can pull it off.
You know, we were like, what are we going to do with this big thing? So somehow, Michael, we got stuck with it.
That's all right, that's all right, commissioners.
But it's going to be beautiful. It's really a beautiful piece of work already.
Very much so, yeah.
I like the fact that we're going to light it. We'll be able to see it from the highway.
Yes.
It'd be great. That's great.
Commissioners, this is a great collaboration with the Wright Dunbar community. This will be one of the gateway projects that, you know, our county engineer has done a fantastic job. We've given us a great bridge. So now you'll see this great monument coming into the Wright Dunbar area.
That's nice.
Very nice.
Okay. Thanks, Phil. Move to approve. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Environmental Services.
Thank you, commissioners. We have Resolution 1307. Accept a temporary easement deed for sewer lines and authorize an agreement for payment of $5,565 to the Humane Society of Greater Dayton for the Austin Boulevard Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project and record the same. The next five are to prepare and submit applications to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's State Capital Improvement Program and execute contracts as required for grants and loans. First is 1308 Mans Water Main Replacement Project in the amount of $500,000. 1309 Bayside and Barrett Water Main Replacement Project Phase III in the amount of $500,000. 1310 Falmouth and Esmeralda Water Main Replacement Project in the amount of $985,000. 1311 Green Hill and Hornwood Water Main Replacement Project in the amount of $1,500,000. And 1312 Cedar Lawn Water Main Replacement Project in the amount of $380,000.
I move for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Business Services.
Thank you, commissioners. Under Business Services, Community Economic Development, I have two resolutions authorizing agreements for the Building Regs Department through December 31st at the end of this year. Resolution 1313 XPEX LLC for Commercial and Residential Plan Review Consulting Services in an amount not to exceed $48,000. And 1314 Safe Built Ohio LLC for Certified Building Official and Backup Building Official, including Commercial and Residential Services in an amount not to exceed $49,000.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Soil and Water Conservation District.
Good afternoon, commissioners, everyone. We have 25 projects today for approval of our 2022 Schedule of Ditch Maintenance Assessments. Resolution 22-1315, the Butternut Volunteer Drainage Project in Clay Township in the amount of $4,275.72. 1316 Chimney Springs Group Drainage Project in Miami Township in the amount of $3,231.40. 1317 is the Dotson Road Group Drainage Project in Clay Township in the amount of $3,841.14. 1318 is the Harden West Group Drainage Project in Perry Township in the amount of $2,216.52. 1319 is the Horning Group Drainage Project in Perry Township in the amount of $4,733.83. 1320 is the Keeneland Drive Volunteer Group Drainage Project in Butler Township in the amount of $117.70. 1321 is the Kingery Main and East Group Drainage Project, Perry Township in the amount of $8,876.86. 1322 is the Kingery North Group Waterway Project in Perry Township in the amount of $2,675. 1323 is the Little Farms Group Drainage Project in Perry Township in the amount of $3,761.05. 1324 is the Manning Road Group Drainage Project in German, Jackson, and Jefferson Townships in the amount of $1,391. 1325 is the Marshall Sweet Potato Group Drainage Project in Clay Township in the amount of $15,129.99. 1326 is the Pleasant Plain Group Drainage Project in Clay Township in the amount of $3,174.83. 1327 is the Schaefer Card Group Drainage Project in Clay Township in the amount of $2,674.99. 1328 is the Spring Run West Group Drainage Project, which is in the city of Trotwood in Jefferson Township, in the amount of $4,275.05. 1329 is the Swamp Creek Group Drainage Project, Clay Township in the amount of $9,148.50. 1330 is Tom Run's Group Drainage Project, Clay and Perry Township, in the amount of $8,025. 1331 is Tom Run's West Group Drainage Project in Clay Township in the amount of $2,857.76. 1332 is the Villages of Miami Group Drainage Project in Miami Township in the amount of $4,793.60. 1333 is the Waitman North Group Drainage Project in Clay Township in the amount of $749. 1334 is the West Arlington Volunteer Drainage Group Drainage Project, Clay Township in the amount of $802.50. 1335 is the Wolf Creek Group Drainage Project, Clay Township, in the amount of $5,243. 1336 is the Wolf Creek North Pile Group Drainage Project in Clay Township in the amount of $481.50. 1337 is the Wolf Creek North Voluntary Waterway Project in Clay Township in the amount of $910.36. 1338 is Wyson Group Drainage Project in Perry Township in the amount of $3,953.22. And then we have one late item, and that is the Strunks Group Drainage Project in Clay Township. And that is 1341 in the amount of $8,881.55.
I move for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, under County Commissioners, we have Resolution 22-1339 to accept and approve the annexation of 59.401 acres, more or less, from Clay Township, Ohio to the city of Brookville, Ohio, utilizing the special procedure Expedited Type II Annexation in accordance with Section 709.023 of the Ohio Revised Code. Move to approve. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And now we have a hearing. Shute Mill Road Reconstruction Project.
Yes, commissioners, we had the viewing a few weeks ago on this project. And Joe Durham is our project manager, and we'll be giving you the hearing presentation.
Mr. Durham, Mr. Gruner, anybody else wishing to give testimony in this hearing, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give is truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So hope you got it.
I do.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, commissioners, administrator. Again, my name is Joseph Durham with the Montgomery County Engineers Office. This is a hearing for the Shute Mill Road Reconstruction Project. This project is located up in Harrison Township. Runs essentially, starting on the west side of State Route 48 to the left and runs eastward to the right through the intersection of Riverside Drive, right up against the Stillwater River and the corp line of the city of Dayton. Walking through this corridor, the next few slides, what you're going to see is a mixed use. It's commercial, there's some residential, there's some schools, and there's a park. So we're starting at the western limit of the project, looking eastward. You'll see as we go along, you see the section of State Route 48. We have some gas stations, north and south side, businesses to the right. This is actually, to the left is actually a plat area owned by Harrison Township is Swallow Park. It's an unimproved park. It's a glorified drainage ditch. Continuing moving on the left, we have a residential home. On the right, you have Horizons Academy. SVG Motors at the intersection is Sue Ann Boulevard. On the left is continued, which is the north side, some residential homes. Continuing further on the right, we have Charity Adams Early Academy, Dayton Public Schools, also Girl Scout Academy. And then we start coming up on the left, which is again the north side, Sinclair Park, owned and operated by Harrison Township. Then we come to the intersection of Riverside Drive, which is the intersection, which is the entrance to Sinclair Park. And going through that intersection, we have a daycare on the right. And again, then we ultimately come up to Stillwater River and the end of the project. I'll show you some photos of all the purpose and need for this particular project. But ultimately, we're going to replace the existing deteriorated asphalt-wearing surface and make repairs the underlying concrete pavement. We're going to deal and replace the crumbling concrete medians, replace deficient storm sewer catch basins, storm pipe, replace the existing signal at the intersection of Riverside and Shute Mill, replace two structural, deficient structures, one's a culvert, one's a bridge, rehab a bridge, and then install pedestrian bike facilities with a sidewalk on the north side and a shared-use path on the south side. So again, to show the reasons why these improvements are needed, photo on the right is showing the deteriorated asphalt pavement, cracking. Photo on the left, you can kind of see that bump in the pavement. What that is showing, it's hard to tell, I can understand, that's indicative of a failing concrete joint. Again, there's concrete pavement under the asphalt. We have to take that asphalt off. We'll repair all the concrete and put new asphalt back down. The medians, the photos show unfortunate condition of the medians out here along this stretch of Shute Mill Road. We are going to rip these out and completely replace them. This is unfortunately the condition of the catch basins along this stretch of road. They are crumbling, deteriorating. These are maintenance-prone style structures. We are going to replace them all with more current standards, which are more maintenance-friendly for our crews. And we've also videoed all the storm sewer. And when we found a storm pipe that is in poor condition, we'll replace that as well as part of the project. The traffic signal, the existing one Riverside and Shute Mill, it will be impacted regardless due to the need to replace our deficient bridge, which I'll show you shortly. And since it's already impacted and due to its age, we will replace it with a new mast arm style installation. This is a photo of an existing six-foot diameter culvert. It's located just west of the intersection of Riverside Drive and Shute Mill. It is a general appraisal rating of four. It's four out of nine. Zero would mean that there is no structure anymore. It's failed. Nine is a brand-new. So it's at that point in its life where it's, at the end of its useful life, we want to get in there before it becomes a problem and replace it. This is a existing structure. It's corrugated metal pipes about 12 feet in width by about seven feet in height. It's also a general appraisal of four out of... about seven feet in height. It's also a general appraisal of four out of nine. This particular structure runs under the intersection of Riverside and Shute Mill at a diagonal. So we will replace this structure with a brand-new four-sided box culvert. Due to the geometry of how this structure crosses diagonally under that intersection, it will be necessary for us to close Riverside Drive for a period of time during this project. I'll show you the detour for that in a moment. Now, this is a another corrugated mi- corrugated metal pipe arch structure. This particular structure actually extends out from under the intersection of State Route forty-eight and Shute Mill Road. We are going to rehab- rehabilitate this pro- this particular structure. The reason why we're going to rehabilitate this one versus the one under the intersection of Riverside Drive, because there's a forty-two-inch high-pressure water main which runs over this one, but under the one at Riverside Drive. So to do the phase construction, to support a water main, try to maintain traffic, it's cost prohibitive to physically replace this one. We are able to rehabilitate this one in place, whereas the one in Riverside, under the intersection of Riverside Drive, though we have to close Riverside for a period of time, it's not not cost prohibitive to physically replace it, get a brand-new structure. Finally, we will be installing pedestrian facilities, as I said, along the stretch of Shute Mill from State Route forty-eight all the way to the entrance of Sinclair Park at Riverside Drive. So there's RTA stops along this, there are schools. On the north side, we're going to do a sidewalk. On the south side, it's going to be a shared-use path, which could handle bicycles already. What that does is allow it to tie into the existing Stillwater River rec trail, which comes out of Sinclair Park, heads east, cross Stillwater River, and ties in along and all the way ultimately to downtown Dayton. To be able to do this project, we will be needing to extend the existing standard highway easement through some perpetual easements, and we'll need some temporaries to physically construct it. So perpetual warranty deed, we'll need about point-three acres. Standard highway easement, just under point-six acres. Storm or storm or sanitary sewer easements, about point-zero-three acres, and then temporary easements to ultimately grade everything into the existing, just shy of point-eight acres. Cost for the project, we're just a little over six hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in design. Construction is about four-point-three million dollars. Now, with the way the economy's going and availability of materials, we've got to track that. There may be some variation in that. Costs of these, those easements, perpetual and existing, that'll be determined by a real estate appraiser that we will hire. And then we have received a federal grant through the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission for just under two-point-seven million dollars for construction. And then we have submitted applications to the Ohio Public Works for additional grants and loan funding for this project. Remaining schedule for the project, we're coming out of the design element. We're moving into the right-of-way acquisition phase. So we will start the acquisition. We anticipate the full process, getting, having the appraiser do their work, going out, meeting with property owners. It's about a year's worth of time. So it'll wrap up by August of two thousand twenty-three. Utility relocations can actually start now, because a lot of the work that they need to do is already in existing right-of-way. We anticipated actually, however, after we clear right-of-way, some additional work needs to be done. So that's why we're showing a March of two thousand twenty-four completion for utilities. And then ultimately, construction will start at that moment in time, March twenty-four, and then wrap up in May of two thousand twenty-five. Now, as I said, due to the geometry of that one pipe arch, that bridge, under the intersection of Riverside Drive and Shute Mill, we will need to close Riverside Drive for about five months. The detour of Riverside Drive will utilize Forest Park over the State Route forty-eight. The intersection of Riverside and Forest Park and the intersection of State Route forty-eight and Forest Park are both signalized. So it would be a safe detour of vehiculars making those movements. And with that, if anyone has any questions?
No questions.
Just it would be nice to have that done.
No question, Commissioner. Yes, really, really needed. That section rose, it really is in bad shape, and we're really happy to be able to do this.
The crumbling of the medians has been happening for ten years at least.
It's a, it's a standard graph for our street sweepers.
For sure. Yeah, it'll be so much better. Thank you.
Well, okay, Commissioner, you want me to do it, or you want to do it?
I've got it right here.
Okay.
I make a motion to close the public hearing and determine that the project is needed, and the safety, convenience, and welfare for the traveling public requires the Shute Mill Road Reconstruction Project in the Harrison Township, and recognize it as it is also necessary to facilitate the right of the public to improvement and maintenance of and uninterrupted travel to county roads pursuant to Chapter five-five-five-three of the Ohio Revised Code, and authorize the county engineer to proceed with right-of-way negotiations.
I'll second that. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And now we have comments by our citizens, and we have one individual, Marion Perry.
Good afternoon.
Commissioners.
Hello.
As you know where I live, I want to show you a picture. I don't know how to cast it or whatever.
Emily can show us.
Yeah. That's one of our neighbors.
Well, actually, that's an empty house. Do you see what that is?
I'm not sure. Why don't you tell us what it is? Why don't you tell us what it is?
It's a house that was cleaned up per a lawyer who was supposedly, I guess, through a quick claim deed on that property. The owner is deceased, and the house is falling down virtually. The neighbors next to that house are using it as their personal dumping site. So what you just saw was a snake on a bag, and what they do is they throw their dog's byproducts in that yard. Those neighbors, in maybe two weeks, give or take, will be going on vacation or leaving to go where they live. Originally, they're from Virginia. They will come back with another car. Now, in California, if you come back with a car that has something in it that police dog smells, they strip that car until they find it. Once they find it, the person getting it back will get a piece of it. You can't do nothing with a stripped car, because that dog has hit on that car, finding drugs in that car. They'll go to, like I said, either West Virginia or Virginia, coming back with drugs. Now, our lovely sheriff is sitting on it. He's not doing anything. Every time they do this, as the holiday is coming, Labor Day, we have to deal with what they do. We have to deal with the dogs. The next-door neighbor to the house has to deal with the smell, the dogs, the noise. There are a lot of people on my street that are, okay, type-two diabetic. How would you like a snake coming down your street? How would you like a rat? Not a mouse, a rat. Because of them, that's what we have. That's what we have to deal with. We are older people. Some are way older than me, and I'm lucky to see my age, but I'd like to see them see their age. They're in their eighties. I'm in my sixties. I would like to see everybody on my street be safe. But as long as these people live on the street, we are not safe, period. We are not safe because of the drugs. We are not safe because of people coming down the street that are crack addicts. We see a lot of other women, people. I'm not going to go into that. But all we want to do is feel safe on our street, in our houses. We want peace. We try to deal with everybody, but them, we can't. And even the lo- the owner of the house, his name is Reggie Lewis. He says he doesn't own it. And he's getting credit for it. Thank you.
All right, County Administrator.
Thank you, Commissioners. Today, our workforce division, they are working out at Crox Distribution Center in Van Dalia. They'll also be there next Tuesday from ten to three, and they're helping Crox with a hiring event. And this is pretty spectacular, because Crox is looking to pick up a lot of people. So our workforce staff will be on location. We'll also have our mobile workforce unit on-site, Commissioners, to help with resume building and to help with our online application process. All of this is mobile and is on-site. Our workforce division is also available to help anyone that is in need of resume development or basic job coaching. Now, we provide those services at all of our job locations, including our West Town Employment and Opportunity Center at forty-three oh three West Third Street in Dayton. And just like we're doing for Crox, any employers that are out there that are looking for assistance from our workforce team to help with hiring events or to help with workforce, please call our job center or either contact them. We have our mobile unit who can come out on-site, and and we can hire right on the spot. So anybody out there that's looking for help, please contact the job center, and we will have some of our staff help you. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Michael. And you know, it's so nice to know that Crox is so happy being here, that they're expanding their operations here, right here in Montgomery County, Ohio. Judy used to always say, when Payless first came here, she would always say whenever she spoke to a crowd, "I'm looking, does everybody have their Payless shoes on?" So I told her a couple of weeks ago, "You got to switch that now. Does everybody have their Crocs on?" We're happy they're here, and yeah, it's exciting. I'm glad that we can help them with their hiring processes.
Thank you, Commissioners, and the team, the workforce team has been working really hard. Chris, hats off to you and Marvina and Garth and the team. I know they, and that mobile unit, Commissioners, that you all championed a few years ago.
So nice.
It is getting a lot of work.
Oh, I'm bet.
So it is, it is everywhere. So thank you.
Looks great.
Well, and I just have to, my grandchildren, my grandsons, I think they're keeping Crox in business, because they have many, many Crocs. They just love them, love them.
Yeah, they're fun.
Okay, I'm pleased to announce that in a little over five weeks, the United States Department of Agriculture will be increasing, increasing the supplemental nutrition assistance benefits and adjusting and adjusting income eligibility standards. That's SNAP. Starting October first, the maximum benefit for a family of four will increase to nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars per month. This is a significant development for working families who are having a very difficult time with rising costs at the grocery store. As a reminder, families who get SNAP benefits can also take advantage of a dollar-for-dollar match-up to twenty-five dollars per day at area farmers' markets that take SNAP. Now, that program is called Produce Perks. You can find participating markets and more details at produceperks.org. That's produceperks.org. Thank you.
That Produce Perks is a great, great thing that we, that federal government has allowed, because sometimes it's hard for people to get the produce, especially if they're in a food desert.
Right.
And so that's great. You know, that increase is so important, and it's really couldn't come at a better time. As Carolyn saw today, she went to a food distribution and... I did? Yeah, so this, hopefully, this will take a little bit of the burden off families, so that maybe they won't have to go as often to a food bank or to a distribution. So thank you to the federal government for this.
And you remember, Commissioners, the work that you all have done. I think you're having, through NACO and through CCAO, a lot of these ideas have come forward, and this really helps people out. You know, a lot of, I think a lot of people can look at this and say, well, maybe it's, you know, given away free, but it's not. It's really helping working-class families. It's just need help. So thanks for your advocacy, working through these organizations.
Well, it's something we've talked about for years, you know, increasing SNAP, and to see it finally happening. Again, it couldn't have come at a better time.
Right. Well, and as you mentioned, I did work all morning with almost two hundred Care Source employees in conjunction with the food bank, and there, I don't know what the final count will be, but at one point, with still quite a few people to go, we had already seen eight hundred cars come through. And some of those cars were picking up food for two, three, four families was the max. And I was at the potato station, and right next to the tomatoes and in between corn. And what I can say is that every car was so thankful for it, and especially for fresh, you know, they were very excited at fresh tomatoes and fresh corn, not canned items. So anyone out there, you know, they were staying until the last, until the food was gone or the last car was served. Hopefully, the last car was served. Hopefully, they wouldn't have run out of food. But the need continues to be great. So all of that is very important. I also wanted to mention that our Environmental Services Department has broken ground on a new septic, septic receiving facility for recreational vehicles at our Spalding Road location in Kettering. And we're excited to bring this service back to RV customers, and it will be open probably next spring. I'm sure we'll mention it when it's actually open. Environmental Services is also proud to be designing and soon breaking ground on the Stillwater Lift Station replacement, which is a seven-point-five-million-dollar investment, and several other lift stations around the county. And those upgrades, along with our sixty-five-million-dollar sewer moderniz- this is a mouthful, sewer modernization and revitalization treatment project, also known as SMART, the SMART project. You know, these are really important investments that we make, hopefully in a timely fashion before these things, just as Joe was talking about, you know, that it was getting to the point where that, you know, that road, you don't want things to break. You don't want your sewers to not work. So we are ensuring that our sewer infrastructure and our water treatment plants meet not only our current needs, but we're upgrading them for our future needs and taking advantage of all the things we learn and the technology and materials and all that. So thank you to your team for the hard work that you're doing for the benefit of our whole community, not only for the coming years, but for years way past when we're all gone. We hope it will still, they will still be standing and functioning for the future. I would also mention, for anybody watching, I was out at the United States Air Force Museum Saturday night for the opening of an exhibit, it was pretty interesting, of marine artists. So soldiers who had been in the Marines. It's from the Marine Heritage Museum, which is in Quantico, Virginia. And they are, the different military museums are starting to share exhibits, because in reality, they all worked together. Years ago, they were very separate, but now they work very much together, and so they're trying to do that with their exhibits. I highly recommend it. Some very beautiful artwork, and I believe it centers on the last forty years. And so if you need an excuse to go out to the Air Force Museum, check out this exhibit. It's back in Hangar Three, so you get to take a long walk. And I would also say, this is left, the day I was there, it was leaving the next day. I didn't know they had a tra- they're starting to do more travel exhibits. They actually had a traveling Vietnam Veterans Wall.
Yeah, I saw that.
Just like they have in Washington, DC, and they had it there at the Air Force Museum. It was very special.
Yep.
So anyways, lots, always check out the Air Force Museum for things that...
It's Tom, just, you know, making his exit.
That's okay.
That's okay.
You're allowed. So a lot's happening, good stuff, good stuff. So...
A lot is happening, and especially last week, we were like nonstop. We had a lot of great things to celebrate. We celebrated our investment and the groundbreaking at the new Ronald McDonald facility, which is exciting for them. We went and did a ribbon cutting at the beautiful new roundabout that, gosh, it's, it's really nice. I was able to use it again, and I've been, nothing but positive comments about it. And, but what made me think about, talking about the roundabout, was seeing our lift station down there. It's beautiful. And so those, I'm like, look at that pretty house. Oh, it's a lift station. You know, those investments are so important. And I think that, you know, we're excited You know, those investments are so important. And, and I think that, you know, we're excited about this next one. These aren't things that are flashy or, oh, wow, the county is, yeah.
Until we don't.
Right, exactly. Yeah, we want our sewer and water to work, right? But.
But you noticed too, Commissioner, that Matt's team made it look like a house.
That's what I'm saying. I was like, look at that beautiful home.
It blends right into the neighborhood. You wouldn't even know what it is.
Yeah, it even has a beautiful gate go up to it. Anyway, you know, we, again, we just had a lot of neat things to celebrate last week. What a, the convention center, that was big. That was big. You know, we, we're going to have a great convention center. Again, it's been a long time since we could be proud of a convention center, but we're going to have a great convention center. Yeah, it's going to take two years. Yep.
Thanks to your investment too, Commissioners. That's a, that's a big project.
It was a difficult, you know, it, it took some time. I know you served, yeah. I was going to say, you're, you're, you serve on that, but Michael was on the planning group, who were the ones that said, do we need to have a convention center? And the answer came back, yes, we do. We need a convention center. So hopefully, things will fall into place like they're falling into place and that segues into the next really cool thing we did last week, into the Water Street Development. We went, Carolyn and I went to Bracket Builders, who are a builder out of Columbus. But if you look at signs between, they're partners with Crawford Hoin and Jason Woodard. But now it seems like everything over there is all Bracket Builders. And they like our areas so much, they put one of their offices here and it is incredible. It's beautiful. Yeah, it was a Mendelson building that was just a warehouse. But you go in that building, you gotta go see it. I mean, it's just amazing what these guys did with it to rehab an old building. Then next door, we went for the ribbon cutting of Muller Brew Barn. And it probably has the best patio we have in town.
Right, lucky enough.
Yep, over the ball field. And then they, and they also have, so they've got this great patio that I read is dog friendly. But then upstairs, they have like a, another patio, like that overlooks the ball field. And it's so, a lot going on. It's going to continue. So we're excited. We are excited. And so talking about excitement, does anybody want a dog? This is the weekend to get a new dog. I won't be, but. The Animal Resource Center is hosting again our free adoption event Saturday. And that's part of the nationwide effort to clear the shelters. It's a campaign that's been going on for a while and we've been taking part of it. And Clear the Shelters, our adoption event at the ARC is this Saturday from 10 to 4:00. Our ARC is located at 6790 Webster Street in Vandelia. And all of the adoptable dogs are fully vaccinated and have been spayed or neutered. And you also get a free dog license. And the license fees are paid through a wonderful sponsorship by Diagroff Lo Man and Schultz. We need to thank them, our friends there, the Tiger, and as well as Starco Inc. And we appreciate their support because it really means a lot for us to be able to not only clear the shelter, but to make sure that dogs are getting good, loving homes. And so we hope that everybody that could use a new furry friend, Michael.
No, Brutus, Brutus does not play well with others.
All right. Well, go out on Saturday. And actually, you can go online with to see who's there, what kind of dogs are there, you know, see who's available. But go on out. And even if you don't come away with the dog, it's always such a good feeling to go there and look at those dogs who are being saved and going to find their forever home. So. It's Saturday, Michael.
No, Brutus is going to live forever.
No, he's not.
All right, with that comment. Our next meeting will be next Tuesday, August 30th at 1:30 PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned and have a great week.